Council on hold waiting to do a special city council meeting. Once we decide a couple of the items on this agenda. So we are going to bump up to the top of the agenda. Case number, the seventh issue, the case number RZ 2021-001R. And we're going to go ahead and hear that first, seven and eight, and then we'll bump back to the top after we've heard those issues. After we hear seven and eight and make a decision, we'll do a short recess so the city council can go ahead and weigh in and make their decision. And then we will reconvene and start at the top of the agenda. Okay? All right. So case number RZ 2021-001R. Applicant Key Wade in Development Taylor Knute is requesting a rezona property located at 751 Miller parcel R32531 lot 9B block two Miller addition to the city of Stevieville, E wrath county from B1 neighborhood business to R 1.5 single family. Steve.
Yes ma'am, madam chair and commissioners. This case I'm sure is very familiar to you because you just heard it on March 17th. And during that discussion, when the commission went into discussion on the motion, you very astutely stated that you understood that there was a R 1.5 zoning that had been previously considered in years past, and I had simply missed that. So when we went to the council session and after speaking with the developer, the council recommended that we bring this back to the planning and zoning commission for reconsideration so that we could look at the R 1.5 zoning instead of the B3. So as you know, the intended project for this structure, for this parcel is a single family dwelling. The previous submittal was for B3, which is central business district, and it was a residential dwelling, is a permitted use in that particular zoning. However, it did not really align with the zoning district of a B3, nor did it align with the comprehensive plan. However, this R 1.5 fits perfectly into the comprehensive plan. And it also allows for the developer to be able to move a little more quickly with his plan as the R 1.5 zoning allows for a lot dimension of 50 by 100. And as you may recall, one of these lots did not have that minimum dimension requirement. So before you tonight, we were asking that you reconsider these cases for the R 1.5 zoning. And after, as you stated, the city council will hold a specially called meeting in order to act on your recommendation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any questions for Steve? Is Mr. Knute here?
Mr. Knute is not here today.
Okay. Okay, then let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon? Anybody who wishes to speak against this rezon? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion to discuss.
I'll make a motion that the rezon be approved.
That we recommend to council approval?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Just in seconds. Do we need discussion or can we go straight to a vote?
Yeah, where's all the other stuff that goes with it? Like no curbs, no gutters, all that stuff? I'm just curious.
That's coming later. Just hold on.
That'll be on here soon.
We'll be doing that.
It's coming.
All right. Then let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we will recommend to council approval on that. Moving on to a very similar case, number RZ 2021-002R. Applicant Key Wade in Development Taylor Knute is requesting a rezona properties located at 751 Miller parcel R32529 lot 8 lot 2 Miller, Miller addition to the city of Stevieville, E wrath county, Texas from B1 neighborhood business to R 1.5 single family. Steve, I assume it's the same.
Same situation ma'am, and on this particular parcel, this would have required the developer to actually go to the board of adjustments. Will not be necessary with the R 1.5 zoning to allow him to move more quickly with his development plan.
Excellent. Okay, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this rezon? Anybody wishing to speak against? Closing the public hearing, may I have a motion?
Move to approve RZ 2021-2R.
Move to recommend to council approval of the rezon. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Brian? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that goes forward to council with a recommendation to approve this rezon. We are now going to take a short recess so city council can go ahead and meet and make their decision on this. So we will reconvene in hopefully five to 10 minutes.
Please, I appreciate you and your county committee doing this for us on short notice. I think that you all have made a good recommendation. So Steve, I'll let you take over. We're going to call on, we're calling this council meeting into order. Do you have, establish that so Steve can take over.
Yes, sir. For this particular case in Murphy's Law, my computer just died on me pulling it back up. But on this first case, as you, as you heard the, switching, okay. Mayor, we're having to switch seats.
All right, they want us to swap out.
All right. Yes, sir. Case RZ 2021-001R. This is applicant Key Wade in Development Taylor Knute requesting a rezona properties located at 751 Miller, which is parcel 32531 lot 9B block two of the Miller addition to the city of Stevieville, E wrath county, Texas. This request is to rezon from B1 neighborhood business to R 1.5 single family. Sir, as you heard from the previous meeting with the P and Z, this was previously submitted as a B3 rezoning request. It was later discovered that R 1.5 zoning does exist in the city zoning ordinance. That lines more closely or actually perfectly with the comprehensive plan. As a result, when the city council heard this on April 6th, you directed staff to return to P and Z for reconsideration. P and Z just held that meeting and by unanimous vote, recommended the rezon be approved to R 1.5 zoning. And with that, sir, I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Right now, we're going to enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2021-001R. Does anyone like to speak in favor of the request? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the request? Right now, we'll close the public hearing and we'll outtake the recommendation for considering approval of rezoning property located at 751 Miller parcel R32531 lot 9B block two Miller addition city of Stevieville.
So moved.
Neighborhood business district one to single family district R 1.15.
Still so moved.
Second.
Mark Mokes makes a motion. Who is it, the second?
Alan.
Alan.
Alan next, okay? Any other discussion? See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, item number three. Steve?
Yes, sir. Case RZ 2021-002R. Applicant Key Wade in Development Taylor Knute is requesting a rezona properties located at 751 Miller parcel R2, I'm sorry, R32529 lot 8 block two of the Miller addition to the city of Stevieville, E wrath county, Texas. This request is to change zoning from B1 neighborhood business to R 1.5 single family. Sir, the reasons behind this request are the same as the previously stated case. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Steve? Here now, we're going to enter into a public hearing on case RZ 2021-002R. Anyone like to speak in favor of the request? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Right now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance. Our motion.
I'll move to approve the rezon request from B1 to R 1.5 as presented, sir.
Second.
Mark makes a motion. Who is it, the second?
Brandon.
Okay, is that Brandon? Okay. Motion second, any further discussion? People in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion passes again. Well, please, I appreciate you and your committee giving us some time to do this in the middle of this, and also for the council for signing on so quickly in the middle of another evening. Thank you all very much, and our city council meeting will stand adjourned.
going to stop at, start at the top of the agenda. And we will begin with considering the approval of the minutes for December 16th. Do I have a motion?
Okay. Well, you're here.
Cliff makes a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
All right.
Oh, no, not Bruce. No, no. I'm trying to find the December minutes, but I saw some of them, some of the minutes.
They were on a separate.
No, I don't see anything here.
There was, there was two different ways to access it, and it was available on one of them and not on the other.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe my concern was one of the other sets of minutes because Russ McDaniel's name was misspelled.
That was that one. That was the December one, I think.
Was it?
Well, if we could, Russ McDaniel, M C D A N E L, correct?
Yes, not I E L.
Right.
It was spelled McDaniel, which is a mistake I made when I first met him.
That was the, on the hearing on that, the land right by you, right? Yeah, I think that was the December meeting. Okay, so if we could just note that, can we get a second for approval with that change?
Second with the change, yes.
All right. All those in favor of approving the December 16th minutes with the change of correcting Russ McDaniel's last name?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Consider approval of minutes for the March 10th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for March 10th.
Do I have a second? Who can give me a second?
A second.
Okay, just in second. All those in favor of approving the minutes for March 10th? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Consider approval of minutes March 17th? Motion to approve. One of you who are here.
I move that we approve the minutes March 17th.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Just in seconds, all those in favor of approving?
Move to amend.
Excuse me?
Move to amend.
Move to amend.
I was, I was at this meeting on the phone.
You hadn't been sworn in, so you're not.
So technically, I was there, but I wasn't there and I was voting. So that's weird. But we didn't vote that meeting, did we? Skip the meeting. I didn't vote that meeting because I couldn't be heard. That's correct.
That meeting?
I think that was just.
Was we were only hearing, it was a public here, we were just hearing it?
I was on this because I remember watching them and y'all taking a vote, and I couldn't be heard. But that was on two meetings. So I called in two meetings back to that.
Oh, it was for the chair and vice chair positions.
Okay, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, on this meeting, we didn't even vote. It was just hearing the.
Either way, I wasn't a commissioner at the time.
Okay.
So we're good.
We're good. Okay, all those in favor of approving the March 17th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Okay, now we will move to the plan development update, case number.
Don't count against my attendance, okay?
PD 2020-003, PD 2020-004, and PD 2020-005. Steve Emmons, applicant for the above referenced plan development and representing Spectra Student Living, will be providing an update to the commission in regards to the PD pursuant to section 154.08 of the zoning code. Steve.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair. City ordinance requires on a PD that you receive an annual update on the project in relation to the schedule. Although Mr. Emmons' project has not quite hit the one year anniversary when his PD was approved, it was approved with conditions that certain single family improvements would be constructed and completed by April 1st of 2021. We've had some delays with some review processes, weather, things of that nature, and so we didn't quite hit the April 21, or I'm sorry, the April 2021 target date. However, they are moving quickly. They have, the project is underway for the construction of those improvements. It has been surveyed, and I think they're actually at this point turning the dirt for those particular lots. So a very familiar face, Mr. Steve Emmons flew in tonight to provide an update on the project. This is basically a housekeeping issue to make sure that we're updating the commission as required by the city ordinance and also by the deadline that was placed on this particular PD by the condition. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I guess I should state that I did include in your staff report, the excerpt from the ordinance that states basically what the requirements are for this particular PD and the update, and then also the alternatives that the commission would have to be to either recommend to the city council that they extend the development schedule, or as the ordinance specifies, you could initiate proceedings to have the planned development removed from the zoning map. However, I think with the information that you'll hear tonight, that that may not be the recommendation that we would bring to the commission from the staff level. And with that, ma'am, I would answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any questions for Steve?
Yeah, I do. I go by that development three times a week when I go to the gym. I was under the impression that the neighbors further down, what was it, Mimosa Street, were upset that this was going to be tall buildings looking over into their yards. And we, we agreed with them that the buildings back to the back portion of the development, at least were going to be low rise buildings. And when I go along Tarleton Street, they're three story buildings.
Is that directed to me?
You or?
Why don't we let Mr. Emmons speak and then? And then we can address best.
So a few different proposals were made for the development. The initial proposal was a multifamily development on all six plus acres, or no, excuse me, eight plus acres. And through some back and forth conversations with the neighbors, with city officials, it was decided that we would cut the development over in half and only develop the three acre, or excuse me, the front acreage, about, about four acres, and just put the buildings on the, the R3 multifamily portion that was now. I don't think there's a limit to the number of stories of the buildings, but there was a limit to the height that we could, could go. So I mean, we are, we're, oh shoot, probably 600 to 700 feet from Mimosa Court backyards.
Okay.
There's no, I mean, there's no.
When I'm driving down the street, I can't see them far back.
Yeah, and you're more, and if anybody wants to contact me and would like to come out, I'm here at least once a week, or here every week pretty much, to check on progress of the project. I'm happy to, to give anybody a tour at any time.
Who is your, who is your supervisor on site?
Clayton Brewer.
Clayton Brewer?
Yes.
Okay. I just might stop in and see him then.
Absolutely. And then, again, he's there sometimes, but I will be back next week. I'm not sure what day yet.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Emmons, you got a presentation for us?
Yeah, I'd like to show you a short video, but just kind of explain why we didn't hit that April 1st deadline. So it started with the engineering work and a little pandemic that went on in the country. It seemed like everybody couldn't connect, but we worked very closely with the engineering department, and they were great. And one of the things that was a major concern was stormwater retention and it going through. And so it took some extra time to get everything worked out between the city consultant and city engineer and our folks to get everything kind of lined up where we weren't dumping the water that comes through our property now and that the water that will, will be surface flowing from our project as well. So it took a fair amount of extra engineering, and then we had the ice storm, which slowed everybody down for about two weeks. But we're up and going now. We started turning dirt when I was here last week to bring in all the dirt. We have to bring the site up to handle the stormwater retention for both projects. That's going to take about, about three to four weeks, and then they'll start the underground. So I'm guessing about June 1st, the underground will be completed for the utilities, and then we'll start paving the streets. We're hoping that we can put lots up for sale late June, early July. The multifamily portion of the project is running on a tight construction schedule, but of the eight buildings, they're either all framed or in the process of being framed. We have three buildings that are currently being framed. The first building is drywalled, and MEPs are done in four of the eight buildings, which are your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Site work is, I'd say about 50% done. We're holding off until the framing's done, so we have room to work on the parking lot. Other than that, I think it's moving along well. We have held off on the siding a little bit, just because we're trying to get some other things done, but the front of some of the buildings, and that's not the color, that's just the primer from the wood, are in the process of, of being, being completed.
Okay.
I may, we just put together a short video for those that haven't driven by, that they can see what we're.
Great.
And you can see we're in the back where they're starting to be the single family. Oh, no, I can fly. No, yeah. Yeah, it's a drone.
People have been known to hire helicopters to do this as well.
No, so we, on one of our projects, we, we try to be very friendly to the community. So we hire, luckily, there's a construction program at Tarleton, so we hired a senior as kind of an intern, and part of his duties is to take weekly drone for our investors and for our ownership to take a look at, and it keeps me up to date too. But I will tell you, we really enjoy being part of the community. Our, our site contractor, our concrete contractor, our lumber supply is Pates, our framing contractor is local, our mechanical, electrical, plumbing are local. The drywall company, painting company is local, and our landscaper will be local. The only companies that we got out of the Metroplex, and I don't think it's all the way out of the Metroplex, is our flooring company. Oh, our insulation company's local, and our fire protection company was an hour and a half away. Other than that, everything we sourced for labor materials was done within your community.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Emmons?
And the city requested sidewalk from our project to campus has been completed.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd just like to chime in and thank Mr. Emmons publicly. We've had very few complaints about this site, project site. The complaints that we did have, Mr. Emmons personally investigated, personally approached the complainants, and, and worked out that, brought resolution to that issue. And then just as of this week, with his continued and frequent visits to the community, he pays very close attention to this site, and I just appreciate his efforts and what he's done to work closely with us and to be a good neighbor as, as we had previously requested of him.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I even got the opportunity to get Steve on an April Fool's Day joke.
What did you do?
So two of the neighbors complained because they started before seven in the morning working, and so I went over to apologize to both of them, and I called Steve, and I'm like, yeah, I can't remember the, the nice lady's name, but I said, her husband came out and chased me off the property with a shotgun, and he's like, he's like, oh my God, I gotta go talk to him, but I gotta call. So it was on April Fool's Day, and we both had quite the chuckle.
Well done.
I just want to say, again, this project was, as we all know, was a weird thing to go through the whole process. There's a lot of negative things that came after it, how it got passed, how it, between board members, but in the end, there was a feeling the whole time about the, your business was going to do the right things the whole time, and they've proven that. We all felt it was a good project, it was just getting it finally passed, getting it done, kind of caused some apprehension across the system. So I'm glad to see that it's going. Every time I look by and I drive by it, I'm like, they're doing everything they said, it's fitting in, it's, for, considering it's a construction project that it is, like you say, it's causing minimal interference in the traffic flow. You know, usually you drive by there, there's cluttered up streets and dirt and everything else, and it's, it's pretty good. I mean, yeah, you're going to have some construction problems, but it's, I appreciate what y'all are doing, I really do.
Thank you.
I do too, and I'm glad that you're here.
Yeah, thank you. We are too. And I, as I shared with Steve, I don't know if we'll do another student housing project in the area.[1599.63] And part of his duties is to take weekly drone for our investors and for our ownership to take a look at, and it keeps me up to date, too. But I will tell you, we really enjoy being part of the community. Our site contractor, our concrete contractor, our lumber supply is Pates. Our framing contractor is local. Our mechanical, electrical, plumbing are local. The drywall company, painting company is local. And our landscaper will be local. The only companies that we got out of the Metroplex, and I don't think it's all the way out of the Metroplex, is our flooring company. Our insulation company's local. And our fire protection company was an hour and a half away. Other than that, everything we sourced for labor materials was done within your community.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Emmons?
And the city requested sidewalk from our project to the campus has been completed.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd just like to chime in and thank Mr. Emmons publicly. We've had very few complaints about this site, project site. The complaints that we did have, Mr. Emmons personally investigated, personally approached the complainants, and worked out that, brought resolution to that issue. And then, just as of this week, with his continued and frequent visits to the community, he pays very close attention to this site, and I just appreciate his efforts and what he's done to work closely with us and to be a good neighbor, as we had previously requested of him.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. I even got the opportunity to get Steve on an April Fool's Day joke.
What did you do?
So, two of the neighbors complained because they started before 7:00 in the morning working. And so, I went over to apologize to both of them, and I called Steve, and I'm like, yeah, I can't remember the nice lady's name, but I said, "Her husband came out and chased me off the property with a shotgun." And he's like, he's like, "Oh my God," he goes, "I gotta go talk to him, but I gotta call." So, it was on April Fool's Day, and we both had quite the chuckle.
Well done.
I just want to say, again, this project was, as we all know, was a weird thing to go through the whole process. There's a lot of negative things that came after it, how it got passed, how it, between board members. But in the end, there was a feeling the whole time, but your business was going to do the right things the whole time, and they've proven that. We all felt it was a good project. It was just getting it finally passed, getting it done, kind of caused some apprehension across the system. So, I'm glad to see that it's going. Every time I look by and I drive by it, I'm like, they're doing everything they said. It's fitting in. It's, considering it's a construction project that it is, like you say, it's causing minimal interference in the traffic flow. You know, usually you drive by there, there's cluttered up streets and dirt and everything else. It's pretty good. I mean, yeah, you're going to have some construction problems, but it's, I appreciate what y'all are doing. I really do.
Thank you.
I do, too, and I'm glad that you're here.
Yeah, thank you. We are, too. And as I shared with Steve, I don't know if we'll do another student housing project in the area. We try to keep our kind of a boutique model, kind of a smaller model. But we are looking to do more of a conventional workforce housing project in the area. We've met with SITA, and we've talked with Steve, and there is an opportunity that we're looking at a few locations. So, you may see my face again.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, sir. Steve, do I need to open a public hearing on this, or do we?
No, ma'am, I believe on this, it's simply a recommendation to the council to
have a motion to...
extend the planned development schedule as needed. I don't know that we have a, Mr. Emmons, are you looking at a two-month extension based on your comments?
Yeah. My goal would be, like I said, by July 1st, to have lots for sale. This is our goal.
Okay, July 1st. Okay, commissioners, does somebody have a motion to make?
I recommend that we extend the PD 2202003, recommend, and all these other numbers. Recommend to council to approve till July 1st extension.
Okay.
Second.
I think Brian got in under the wire. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of extending this PD to July 1st, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that moves forward to council. Thank you, sir, for coming out. Appreciate your time.
When is the council here?
It will be first Tuesday in May.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm back for that.
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday of the month.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on, we shall hear case number SV 2021-004. Applicant Clint McKeehan, representing Wellington State Bank, is requesting a subdivision waiver from Section 155.6.04.1 M.1 curb and gutter for property located at 2895 Northwest Loop, parcel R76370, block 155, lot 17, PTOF of City Addition to the City of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas. Steve.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Thank you for doing that for me. That's the biggest portion of this. We have Clint McKeehan and Colby Pack here tonight to talk about this waiver request if, as needed. Basically, as you stated, they are looking for some relief on the curb and gutter requirements for 2895 Northwest Loop. This property has frontage on Forest as well. They have no objection to the improvements along Forest. However, along the Northwest Loop, there's a culvert there, making it difficult for the improvements that are being discussed tonight. So, with this, staff is, of course, this is a requirement by the subdivision ordinance, but with the authority granted to you in that subdivision ordinance, you can make a recommendation to the council to either approve or deny the waiver request. That's what staff is bringing before you tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. McKeehan, did you wish to speak?
Yes. Like Steve said, we appreciate the, what's been going on with Forest Lane and that kind of thing. And we're willing to put the curb and gutter on that side. I think it's going to look nice when we get that finished. We're just concerned on the Northwest Loop, with it being, and there's a pretty steep bar ditch there. And also budding up that curb and gutter to that roadway that it was gonna, it could potentially keep water in the roadway until it gets down to the other drainage. So, our civil engineer has written a letter here stating basically that fact. So, we're just asking for relief from that curb and gutter and sidewalk on Northwest Loop there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. McKeehan? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this waiver request? Anybody who wishes to speak against this waiver request? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, if we could get a motion, then we can discuss this.
I'm going to make a motion that it be denied in light of the fact that, okay. I'll have my say after.
Okay. Is there a second? Is the motion going to fail for no second? Okay. Can I get another motion?
I move to approve case number SV 2021-004. And this is relating only to the curb and gutter, correct?
Correct.
I recommend to recommend to council to approve that waiver.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Brian makes a second. Okay, we can discuss.
Okay. Is it possible to bifurcate this waiver?
Curb and gutter?
Curb and gutter. We're talking about two different streets.
No, we're only talking about...
And we've only got one request. I was basically questioning Steve as to whether this could be bifurcated and them, or them not then having the requirement to do it along Nathan Bedford Forest.
I thought they were.
Well, they are required. You're saying they shouldn't be required?
But if we grant this waiver, they have the waiver along all edges of that same property.
I think the waivers, I think this specifies along the Northwest Loop.
It says it in the description.
Okay.
They're only asking for a waiver on the loop.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't read that properly then, I guess.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner, the application specifically specifies that they are only requesting the waiver along the Northwest Loop.
Oh, okay.
So, this waiver would only be for the Northwest Loop, only in consideration of Northwest Loop, and anything further than, yes, sir, that would have to be a separate application.
I apologize for my ignorance.
Steve, did...
I have no objection to it.
Did, and are guys, in the staff, look at the letter that their people produced? What do they feel about their engineering?
The letter was just recently, I believe, submitted to Mr. McKeehan.
Okay.
However, staff in, as well as the public works staff, we are fully aware of this development.
And do you agree it's a problem, the bar ditch with drainage issues?
Staff recognizes the challenges for this particular site.
Okay.
With that, ma'am, we, of course, subdivision ordinance requires this, but we would encourage you to exercise your authority on the waiver request.
Okay. Todd, I assume you're doing this based upon the bar ditch issue?
Here we go again.
I know.
I'm not going to put a curb. It doesn't make any logical sense.
I'm just going to go ahead and beat this dead horse.
I'd wave the one on the other side of Nathan Forest, too. I'd wave that one, too.
All right.
It's a pretty steep bar ditch over there, too. There's a lot of water coming off that hill and coming around that curve, so...
All right. I just, I'm seeing a future where I see a lovely curb and gutter the whole way and a sidewalk, just like a grown-up city, but I see what you're saying.
And it is another state highway, so...
And here we go again. The state will put one in when they still desire.
They won't.
Isn't that really a text dot issue, though, in light of the fact that that's a state highway?
For the drainage, I believe it would be. They're going to turn that right away.
All right. Well, I see I'm on the losing side here. So, let's go ahead and vote. Are we ready? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this waiver request for curb and gutter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, moving on. Case number SV 2021-005. Applicant Clint McKeehan requesting, I'm sorry, representing Wellington State Bank is requesting a subdivision waiver from Section 155.6.11 sidewalk requirements for property located at 2895 Northwest Loop, parcel R76370, block 155, lot 17, PTOF of City Addition to the City of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas. Steve.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Basically, the same situation, but in this case, consideration of a sidewalk waiver. The application does specifically state that this waiver would be for the Northwest Loop, and the applicant is agreeable to installing the improvement along Forest.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKeehan, do you have anything to add?
Same thing.
Okay. Is specifically your issue the location of it, or is it the bar ditch issue, like?
Yeah, there's not a lot of room between the, where the pavement ends and where the bar ditch begins.
Okay.
So, there's gonna, I feel like there's going to be a grading issue there of getting that flat enough to put, first of all, to put a sidewalk there five feet wide, so...
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this waiver request? Anybody who wishes to speak against this waiver request? I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve SV 2021-005.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. You know I love a sidewalk, guys. Are we all against me?
No.
Haters of sidewalks? Yeah.
This is where we agree. That has to be a sidewalk in that area, because the right next to it's going to develop, and right next to it's going to develop. And once the first development goes in, then another one's going to develop. And we talked about the expense that's put on. We already did this expense on Dollar General. And every time I drive by it, that was the right decision. Yes, it was an expense for Dollar General. It looks weird right now, but in the time, that's going to keep going. And that was the right decision then, and the same thing here. Yeah, there's going to be additional costs, but in order to keep people moving, walking along with these thoroughfares that they already do, we need to start relieving that, and it will never get put back in if we don't start with this little stretch here, because right next to it's going to be developed very quickly. Once one goes, they all go. So, I'll be voting no to recommending the waiver on this one.
I agree with Todd. Anybody else wish to?
What does the engineer's report say, Steve, on this diversion, water diversion thing? Does it address the sidewalk as well as it does the other?
If you're referring to Mr. McKeehan's engineer's report, I personally have not seen that as of tonight.
Oh, okay. I thought you'd...
No, sir. I believe that was a submittal that Mr. McKeehan just recently received, and that has not been shared with city staff to this point.
Okay. Well, at any rate, it'll go to city council. I'm sure they'll see it, whatever we decide one way or another.
With a question just for Steve.
Yeah.
Now, if there are additional charge issues, does the power, does the council have the power to make it a four-foot walkway there instead of a five?
I believe that would require action before the Board of... No, actually, that would require action before the commission.
I'm just wondering.
It's not a zone.
Disability.
Well, because we could deny, we could recommend denial here, and it's five foot was what he pointed out. Well, if we have to make it a little bit narrower there, so there's not quite the cost burden, then if we had the power to do that at some point, we could.
There's no, sorry, I'm speaking up.
Oh, you're the representative.
You're, as a builder, you're 20 foot from the road. The dits, the drainage dits that text doc has, if you put a sidewalk, it'd be in the parking lot, based on how the building sits. So, there is, it goes parking lot, and then it drops down eight foot, and then you're in the roadway. Have y'all driven by there and paid attention to it? I mean, it's, there's a huge dip. It's so bad that the text doc, we're still in conversation with text doc, because we're going to have to ramp up to get into the property. And so, there's still a time, we got an apartment, but there's still a discussion on, because the utilities are buried right there. And if we cut to get into our parking lot, we're going to kill all the fiber. So, we're able to readjust, but that's how steep that embankment is up there in front of the bank. So, the sidewalk, I'm saying right now, the sidewalk could not go down next to the road anywhere. It'd have to be up in the car.
Yeah, if I may, I believe we had a previous, I know this, we had a previous waiver decision, and we wanted to consider placing a condition on that waiver. And we followed up with the city attorney, and the ordinance does not grant the commission the authority to put any type of condition on a waiver decision. It's either approve or deny at this level.
Okay.
And I will say during our meetings, y'all's future plans have no sidewalks there. It was brought up in our meetings prior. Steve was on the Zoom. A couple of members of y'all's staff up here, there's no sidewalk supposed to be got there. It's not on the future plan. It's not, not on anything. So, they were, they were recommending to that we just got to come through here and get it removed. But there's no future plan of a sidewalk going across because of text doc. There was an issue with text doc.
With text doc. Okay.
But going back to the Dollar General parking lot, though, on that sidewalk, they put it back on their property line, didn't they?
That's the whole point of the sidewalk.
It's on the property line instead of it been up on the highway.
The whole point of the sidewalk is it goes on private property. They pay for it, and we don't, it's, the expenses are not ours. We also, for private residential, we have a reimbursement plan, so to speak. But in order to build the sidewalks at a cost-effective rate, the council made the decision that the ordinance comes into place.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Need to talk about it more? All right, the motion stands to recommend to council approval of this sidewalk waiver. We're going to go, we're going to, we're going to go do a roll call vote. Okay? Bruce?
Aye.
Bruce is approving. Justin?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a no. Brian?
I'm going to change it to no.
You're a no. Todd?
No.
No?
And Cliff?
Aye.
You're...
Madam Chair.
Yeah. We are...
This is a tie vote.
Uh-huh.
So, from a previous meeting, we also sought clarification from the city attorney.
Yes.
You are the tie-breaking vote on this matter. So, had you not voted, you would have a decision rendered in that manner.
So, if I, but if I didn't vote, then the vote would have been...
Wouldn't be a tie.
Wouldn't be a tie. It'd be 3-2.
Correct. So...
So, I take my vote out?
If you do not vote on the case, the commission would vote, and then you would have a decision. That was the direction I was given by the city attorney.
Stacy, does that make sense?
The city secretary here that might can help you with that question.
Yes, your vote tied it.
Right. So, what does that mean? So, do I retract my vote?
Typically, that's what you do, because, again, you aren't even number...
Okay.
I think that's correct.
And such, the chair would typically win.
She can create a tie.
Okay, so...
Create a tie, she can break the tie or vote with the majority.
Okay. So, then we... Okay, so this is going to move forward with a recommendation to approve to council. So, a council will make the final decision. You'll need to state your case there. Okay? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Okay. We're going to leap ahead to case number RZ 2021-007. Applicant Jason Sample, as authorized by Brandon McDonald, is requesting a rezone of property located at 1955 West South Loop, parcel R31852 of Greenview Edition, block 2, lot 1, of the City of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas, from B1 Neighborhood Business to Industrial. Steve.
Yes, ma'am. Comprehensive plan for this designates the property to be commercial. The intended project for this is a, going to be a tattoo shop. The current zoning does not list this type of business as a permitted use. However, industrial zoning does list a tattoo shop as a permitted use. I believe it's item 83 under the permitted uses. Current zoning is B1, future land use is commercial. We've put the industrial district in for your review. And then, also, this property is served by city water and city sewer. We have some maps included in your packet, I believe. And Madam Chair, with this, we would, basically, this is the one property in the immediate area that is currently zoned as B1. So, if you change this, it would be the one property in the immediate area that has the zoning of industrial. So, with this, you can recommend approval to the zoning requests, recommend approval of a, recommend approval of a zoning request or zoning classification other than requested, or recommend that the requests be denied. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for Steve?
Yeah, just a quick question. Steve?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I understand the use, but at the same time, if I'm wrong, you correct me. I thought that industrial had to meet a certain plot requirement, like a square footage for that, for that flat. Is that not accurate? Like, it has to be something like 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, or... And I didn't read that in here, but maybe I'm making it up, and I don't remember.
If I can, if you guys can move forward with any other... I, if I can, if you guys can move forward with, uh, any other discussions, I'll, I'll try to pull that up and, and verify that for you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, is the applicant here?
Madam Chair, I understood that he was gonna be here. He and I have visited several times, and I obviously do not see him in the audience. Uh, one thing that he did ask that, that, uh, the commission be made aware of is that he has, uh, he's currently in operation in another locale. He wanted to make it very clear that he recognizes this, but it's a residential area, and for his particular operation, they close at seven, they don't allow late-night visits to the, to the, uh, business, so he would, he, uh, indicates that he would be a good neighbor to that adjacent R1 development.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody who wishes to speak against this rezone? All right, closing the public hearing. Steve, do you have information, or you wanna keep, keep looking?
Yes, ma'am. For industrial zoning, uh, there's no maximum density requirement, requirement, no minimum area requirement.
Okay.
No minimum lot width or depth required. Uh, setback is 20 feet.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a, a motion so that we can discuss?
I recommend that we deny RZ 2021-007.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, was that Cliff making the second? All right, let's, let's discuss it. Uh, what, what's, what's your reasoning?
Spot zone.
Spot zone? It is industrial across the way, though.
But future land use is commercial, and that's right, in a residential neighborhood already, and that would be the only thing on that side that would be industrial.
Yep.
And so that would be a spot zone, and then, I don't know, what's the guarantee of that being a business for the next 50, 60 years, and then, once it does sell, it's still industrial? It's a, it's a single-use switch out.
What else do you, you guys think? I, I'm sort of, I, I feel like it's, um, that the tattoo parlors need to be moved into a different zone. I don't think that they need to be an industrial zone. I think we've, uh, that was a holdover from a time when, um, we had certain industries that we thought we didn't want to prioritize, and so we put them into industrial, sort of like, uh, we also put trailer parks in industrial. Um, and none of those seem to fit industrial to me. It seems to make sense that we should have some sort of review of how we have these businesses zoned, um, or, or, you know, how we have our, our, our zoning recommendations, you know? But, but that obviously isn't the case here, but I, I just wanna say, I think we need to look at that. We need to consider what we have, um, allowable in the different zones, because that seems crazy to me. But that said, I agree with Brian, because who knows how long this business is going to be here? If they move five years from now, that's still zoned industrial, which is strange, uh, and inappropriate for the location. That's, that's what I feel, but I, I feel for this guy and, um, him wanting to be here, and I, I think that's a problem.
I feel for whoever owns that property, because it's just terrible access to it. I mean, it just, I, I don't see how it's commercially feasible in any way, shape, or form, because of the, the unique, uh, layout of the property. It's just, uh...
Well, I think it could work for a tattoo parlor.
Seems to me to almost be a wasted property, because, uh, terrible access to it.